Welcome to the City Council meeting of the City of Hudson for Monday, February 11th, 2013. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yakub.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Tewinkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslow.
Here. This time, anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment to the City Council on any item that is not on our agenda is more than welcome to do that at this time. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment to the City Council? Now is your time. Okay, if not, we'll move on to consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of January 28th, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $352,722.14. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of three regular operator licenses for the period February 12th, 2013, to June 30th, 2014. And the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used on February 22nd, 2013, at the Knights of Columbus Fish Fry Event at St. Patrick's Church. Additional application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the installation of a Kids Don't Float structure providing loaned life jackets at the Lakefront Park Boat Launch with all program costs to be funded 100% by the Wisconsin DNR. To approve the proposal of the Hudson Home and Garden Club to improve the mounds at Burk Moles Park with turf grass and flowering plants. To approve extending the lease agreement with Doughboys Pizza for operating the concession stand in Lakefront Park from May 25th, 2013, to September 30th, 2013, as proposed. To approve the 2013 user fees for Grandview Park and Burton Park at the 2012 rates, no increase.
Did you want that, Paul?
Can you pull that, please?
To approve extending the lease agreement with the Hudson Softball Association Incorporated for operating the concession stand in Grandview Park from May 1st, 2013, to October 31st, 2013, as proposed. To place on file the quarterly reports of the city clerk and library director and the 2012 annual report of the fire department. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
For start of business, is considered renewal of the fire department mutual aid agreement with Lower St. Croix County, or St. Croix Valley and Lake Elmo. Chief Frye.
This is a renewal of a current agreement that we have with Lower St. Croix Valley and Lake Elmo Fire Department. Those agencies opt for a two-year renewal process. It's the same language as the contract before.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item four, Mary, approved 2013 user fees for Grandview Park and Burton Park. Tom, you wanna... Mr. Zulley?
Here.
Mary, what did you have? What questions did you have?
Well, last time we were discussing this, you said that lighting costs had increased 33%, and we were running basically a deficit. So, I can't remember what the number was, like $20,000 or something a year, and I was just wondering why we wouldn't consider, why we didn't consider changing the fees.
The revenues generated at Grandview Park for 2012 totaled just a little over $20,000. Expenses for, total expenditures for the Grandview Park were a little over $43,000. So after reviewing some of the biggest increases were the utilities, especially the electric. So, I recommend, my recommendation to the park board was that maybe we should consider charging a little more for the electric lights. It's just hard to distinguish usage of the lights because they're all on one meter. You know, out of Grandview Park, the one meter takes care of the parking lot lights, the restroom lights, security lights. Also, it takes into consideration, there's a football field that's utilized by the boosters in the fall, probably, you know, for eight weeks in the fall. That would be on that bill also. I did go up to the field last weekend, counted the different lights per field. I believe there's 26 to 28 lights per field. The bulbs are 100, excuse me, 1,000 kilowatts. I just average an hour and a half per game. The kilowatt rate is .1029, currently charged by the city, which comes up to $43, which if, which in our rate for 2012 was about 40, is $45. So if, if the lights are on an hour and a half, I guess we're being compensated for the electric use. Now, maintenance-wise, when those lights were installed, we had a very long warranty on those lights, and really, we, I can't remember changing to any bulbs that we had to pay for. Most of them were all under warranty, so I guess the current rate of $45 really isn't out of line. One thing that we could consider would be if it's possible to get some kind of a meter or some kind of a device where we could know exactly how much usage is per each, whatever game uses. Or they have tokens, and they put in a token for so many hours, and when that time's up, you put some more in. That's a possibility. I haven't checked into that yet, so.
So I'm confused, and if the lighting, if the lighting bill's increased, and we're being compensated for it, where's the deficit coming from?
All the other operating expenses.
So why didn't we consider, you, Jamie Kurt, you know, I mean, I just want to know why we would let something, let, I mean, at $23,000, that's, that's not small. I mean, that's our part-time police force.
And the other thing is, that's for the whole park, that's for mowing, that's for fertilizing, that's for porta-potties at the playground park. Also, that's all part of that.
It is.
So, Tom, when you, when you think about this $45 per game, I mean, are you thinking for the most part, we're just recouping utility costs? And the rest of the cost there?
As long as they're, you know, yeah, as long as they're, they don't go over that hour and a half. If it goes over that, then how do we know exactly what they're using?
But, but what about some of the other, I hear what you're saying, there's a lot of other costs that go into just maintaining the park, but what about some of the other costs for maintaining the fields? So...
Correct me if I'm wrong. I know one big expense is, you know, we have got the irrigation system up there that needs constant maintenance. The mowing, that park gets mowed twice a week because of the irrigation, and it's just...
Yep. And you guys, what's it called, striping or chopping?
And, but that's an additional charge. We charge, field prep is like $30 per game. So, the softball association's argument was that we are one of the highest. They're charged more than some of the neighboring communities, City of Hudson.
They're willing to take that task on with your issue sheet here, request that the city allow us to...
They're not just willing to, they, they want to, so.
And I certainly wouldn't have a problem with that. The only thing is, I would say that they, if they do it, then they use their own equipment, and, you know, they're gonna have, not, I don't think it'd be proper to have it stored out there. So if they want to do it, they can do it with, I would assume they do it with their own equipment, and they would bring it back home with them. We don't really want to have equipment out there.
What kind of equipment are you talking? I mean, they store stuff in the concession stand anyways. If you're talking to striper, that's not very...
I wouldn't have a problem with that, but four-wheelers, drags, you know, things like that, that we'd be responsible for unless it's approved by the park board or, you know, council.
Aren't there drags up there now?
Our drags. I just don't want to have them use our equipment, our four-wheelers, and say, oh, something broke, or...
Or they get hurt.
You know, it's liability, but that certainly could be discussed if that's what you, the route you want to take.
Is it $25 per field each time?
Per game.
You put it, per game? Because it just says prep per field, so I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, per, yeah. They don't do it in between games, so it's just once.
Yeah, if we build these parks and expect people to use them, then why are we going to make it a challenge, excuse me, a challenge for them to come in and play and build the association up where we are making money? Why do we want to put these constraints on them?
I don't want to make money. I want to at least...
Break even.
Get close to breaking even.
But at the same time, he's saying we're making...
There are 5,000, you know, that's, I can swallow it, but 23,000's a big chunk.
But at the same time, he's telling us that the lights are being comp...
But, but the light, that's what I'm saying, the lights aren't my concern. My concern is the deficit, where it's coming from.
What are we taking in from concessions? Because the 20,000 you show here is just pavilion rental. What do we, do you know what that is?
It was not a very lar, I don't remember it, but it's not a very large number.
Okay, I just wonder how much of that went towards the difference.
What, that was another argument by the softball association, is the money, the, it used to be 10%, we did lower to, two years to 8%. The money that we do generate from the concessions, the sales of, sales up there...
8%.
Has, goes right back into the field improvements. A couple times, we've done infield improvements, things like that. I think we put a roof on some of the dugouts, and so the money from the concessions generally goes back into improvements for the fields or the buildings up there.
Kurt, you were gonna say something, and do you remember what it was?
No.
Okay.
Tom, what does it, what does it cost us for Lakefront Park, to maintain Lakefront Park? Roughly, just roughly.
Oh, gosh, I don't have that right in front of me.
And how much income do we derive out of Lakefront Park?
Not anywhere near what it costs.
And how much do we pay for Prospect Park, and how much income do we get?
Well, just rentals, so...
And so my point is, if a park is a park, we should treat them all alike. And just because this is a baseball park, it's no different than what we do with our other parks. We let people use Lakefront Park, and we don't get paid for it. We let people use Prospect Park, we don't get paid for it. So it is part of our service to the community out of the tax dollars that the citizens are paying, and I don't see this as much different than any of the other parks that we run. So, if it's a park, and we're gonna treat all the parks alike, I'm okay with this.
And I think...
Unless we're gonna change.
I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Unless we're gonna change.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, I'm just...
I think what Mary's getting at is, are the costs of operating the baseball fields covered by the revenue? Because it is a special service. I think that's just the question. Is it covered by the revenue that's being brought in?
But I totally agree. There's gonna be part of the cost that's taxpayer borne.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to make profit. I'm not looking for anything like that. I agree with exactly what you're saying. I just, you know, want to...
And I understand, yeah, the cost for the part of the field to be...
I mean, with that being said, then we shouldn't charge fees, right? Because we don't charge fees for anyone to use Lakefront Park. We just have...
We charge for the band shed.
We charge for facilities.
For the band shed, we charge, we charge rentals.
Pavilion rental.
Shelter rental.
But that's a different thing.
But the difference is, everybody can use the park. Not everybody plays softball.
Right.
Very, there's a limited number of people that play softball, but I think anyone can use any of our parks at any time.
Right.
As far as being able to go down and walk in the park and those kinds of things. I suppose we can walk up there, too, but you can't, you can't go up there and play softball if there's another game being played there at the time. So, I think there is a difference.
And I understand that it brings people into Hudson, and they shop, and I get all that. It's not my, my problem is not the softball association. My problem is just the gap in the numbers was bothering me, so I just wanted to, I didn't feel like it should just go through on consent without discussion. I almost feel like there might be some, you know, if we're gonna look at certain things like them striping or take care of prep and stuff, maybe it's not ready to pass through yet. Maybe we can look at ways to, you know, I don't know if there's outside of the box type of ways to maybe...
I would, I would like to consider, you know, checking into this metering system for the lights, and then, you know, then they're, they're paying for whatever they use. I think that's a possibility. If they would care to do the prep work on the fields, I think that would, you know, free some of our guys up from, to do other things if they had cared to do that, so.
Well, that's another thing, too, yeah.
So it'd just be a matter of whose equipment and, you know, where it's stored. If that's, you know, we can certainly discuss that if, if we work out a, a deal.
Tom, how easy would it be, or how difficult would it be to get, just the total cost of running the fields? Extra mowing, the lights, you know, could we get a hand, maybe that number is right around what we're taking in.
Because there's, the difficulty with the meter is it's, does the whole part, so it's not...
Right.
Parking lots, security lights, it's the restroom lights.
But it's only, they're only on when there are games going on.
So, I mean, I think that's pretty, pretty close to what I calculated.
Oh, I see.
And the playground lights and...
The 44, 43,000's pretty close, isn't it, for expenses, Tom?
Well, that's, that's what our, you know, that's what the Grandview Park account number is, so yes, that's, that's what our expenditures were for 2012.
Let me make it clear, though, in case you, we're talking about number four on the park board and number five. So, we passed the number five, and we're discussing about number four. So we've already approved the Softballs Association of 8% request. So what are we talking about?
That's for the, that's for the concession stand.
User fees.
User fees.
Yeah.
So you want to increase the user fees to the softball association?
I don't know, and that, that's not what I said. I asked, my question was, where's the deficit, and how can we fix it? If it's increasing fees, I don't know. If it's finding a way to get, having them prep the fields helps reduce it, let's do that. If there's ways that they're willing to help, I think we should look at it. It doesn't seem like that was really considered. They suggested, and it was kind of just...
We did have some, we presented to the park board that we have some increases for the user fees for Grandview Park. After discussions, they, they decided, they voted to approve just the 2012 rates.
Do you know, do you have those numbers in front of you, or I'm putting you on the spot? Because I don't want to put you on the spot, I just...
I don't have them.
I should've called you earlier, but I...
Yeah, I don't...
Isn't it likely that the user fees will not cover all the expenses? Because it's only, they're only using part of the facilities, not the whole facilities.
That's what I'm trying to get, it's like, could we just get at that number of what it costs to run the baseball, the softball diamonds? And let's see what it is. Maybe the deficit isn't that significant, and most of the shortfall is just due to the cost of maintaining the rest of the...
I don't know that we would have, like, the payroll records, their, their mowing Grandview Park, because they don't break it down, are they mowing?
But we have a rough idea of how long it takes, how often we do it.
How many acres it is, and...
Well, let me add that the softball association was also concerned that they were the ones taking an increase, proposed. You know, we have a school district line item, we have a Hudson Boosters line item, and the boosters are already lower.
Yeah. No, and I, I mean...
So the association was...
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, they were concerned that, why were they taking the hit?
And I don't think anyone's suggesting that they should, more than anyone else. But again, if we could get at that number, it would help us determine...
Yeah, I just want to know where the def, where the deficit is. What's ma, what's, if it's something we can't take care of, then we can. If it's something we can, we can. And that's all I'm saying.
And I guess the question is, is there a deficit? Does it cost 20,000 to run the fields?
Correct.
Then we're breaking even. I'm not sure we know even if there is one.
Another 23,000 is just what it costs to run the park.
Right, right. I just want a better breakdown of what's going on.
And again, the only difficulty, I think, is, is going to be with that, it's going to be with that electric bill, because it's, it's one for the entire...
Fine.
So, we can figure out how many nights out of the summer they're playing, and...
I'll see if there's a way to, see if, if I can check into the way if there's a metering system specifically where we can separate the fields for the lights.
But that won't give us history, though, that would be going forward.
We just need a ballpark number, Tom. How's that for a point?
So you want to approve this?
I just want, can we, can we move it? Can we just postpone it to the next meeting? And my motion would be to postpone this to the next meeting, to give Tom a chance to bring us back some numbers, to see exactly what we're looking at as far as, I'll second the budget.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone till the next meeting to bring back some new budget numbers. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Item six, review park board recommendation, proposals for dinghy storage and access to sailboat mooring. Where are you going, Tom? Coming back?
Thanks, Steve, stay left. Where would you like me to start?
At the beginning.
Well, I... Oh, gosh. I, I forget what council meeting it was, a few months ago, a few weeks ago, I believe it was last fall, when the council chose to remove all dinghies off the dike road.
I think that was September 17th.
When was that?
September 17th.
Yep.
Then at, there was another meeting, I think, after some discussion, I think it was brought up that something was sent back to the park board for options. And that's when we decided to see what we could do to get some clarification as far as the dinghies and where to put them, or options for the mooring people. That's when the proposal for the extension of the courtesy dock kind of all played out. We've had several meetings with the mooring people at the last park board meeting, and I think the one meeting prior to that, they made it very clear that they did not want any connection to the, their dinghy boats on the courtesy dock extension. So, at the last park board meeting, the subcommittee came up with three different options, and they were to have some access to the shoreline, and if approved by council, have some, to allow the, change, change the ordinance and allow dinghies to be back on the dike. So that's where we're at. They chose option three, which was to have three stair accesses from the dike road down to the shoreline, and have an area of some type of river rock to store their dinghies on, along the shoreline.
Corporate counsel, what are our bylaws as far as we have a, we had a motion and approval to not store the dinghies on public property? How do we, what's our time element to bring it back to council?
Well, I mean, that generally applies to a decision that affects somebody else. In other words, the council, if it chooses, can reconsider its own policy.
Okay.
And depending on things that happen after it made the initial decision. If it chooses not to, the ordinance says to reconsider, you need to bring it up at the next meeting. However, I don't believe it's binding on the council if the council wants to reconsider that policy.
And does it need to be brought up by someone who voted?
Yes.
In favor?
Yes.
Or on the prevailing side of the vote?
Right.
What was that vote again, do we remember?
It's four to two.
Mm-hmm.
But that has to be brought up according to the way our rules are at the next meeting, not three months later, or two months later.
Bernard and Tewinkle voted against.
No, yeah. So anyway, your, your preferences, do we want to consider this again tonight?
Yeah.
I would like to, because that, that was what the park board was charged with doing, was to find a solution.
Okay.
So, the timeliness, you know, that's exactly what the park board did.
I guess, I guess one of the things that we did a poor job of communicating back to the park board is that we didn't want to have any access on the public property of those dinghies, because I think that was the motion that passed here.
That's straight into motion.
Right.
I think that's pretty, pretty straightforward when it says it's in the motion.
Might as well just read the motion.
But the park board decided to review the whole thing and made a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay.
The subcommittee came up with the four options, and some of them obviously did not include, you know, storage along the ding, or along the dike.
Right. But they did make a recommendation, and they made a recommendation on three. So council, what's your, I have, I have no problem with reconsidering it tonight unless someone has a real objection to it. Anybody, do you want to?
Do you want to make a motion to reconsider it?
Well, mayor can't really make a motion.
No, no, but he meant in general.
Oh, yeah.
If we need a motion, I'll make a motion to reconsider it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Reconsider just visiting that?
Putting dinghies, dinghies on public property.
Right.
To talk about it tonight or the next meeting?
No, it's on the agenda tonight, so, yeah.
We can talk about it tonight.
Okay.
To reconsider having them placed on public property?
We have a motion and a second to reconsider.
Do they both have to be by people that voted yes? Because Kurt voted no.
Do you have that motion that was previous?
Yes.
Motion by Yakub, second by Bernard, to remove the dinghies from city property by November 15th, 2012, the end of the season, to not tie them on the dike road in the future, and to have the park board find an alternative solution to the problem over the winter. Discussion included the desire to be consistent with city code. Motion amended by Yakub that the topic be brought back to council the first meeting in February. Bernard did not provide a second to the amended motion and also withdrew his second to the original motion. Hoggatt provided a second to the original motion. Additional discussion was held, four yes, two no's. Bernard's and Tewinkle.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm just wondering if Kurt can second it, because he didn't, he voted no. I just would hate to have...
Well, I think that, I think that applies only after, if we were to do it...
In the next meeting?
The next meeting, so I'm gonna allow that second to go through. And again, our, the motion and the second is to consider this information that the park board did the work on. Would that be correct?
Yeah.
Do you see it that way?
That's not how I see it.
Okay, how do you see it?
I see it as he's motion, the motion is to consider having the dinghies, consider dinghy storage back on public property. That's what he said.
Which is the proposal.
Right. Wow. There's other proposals that don't have...
What's that would not be in favor of?
I mean, there's other proposals that don't have that, that's why I'm saying...
Okay, we have the, we have the motion on, and if you read it that way, then it would be, well, we'll, we'll go from there. Is it your, so to clarify the motion, I'm, just so everybody knows what they're, is this to accept proposal three?
No, it's to consider putting the dinghies back on public property.
Okay, but it's not necessarily to accept proposal three?
No.
Out of this time?
It's opening it up to consider putting dinghies back on...
Do some of the options have that provision and some don't?
Don't.
So you're kind of opening up this discussion?
For all of them, to, to look at the discussion. That's the intent.
That's the intent.
Is that clear as mud to everyone? Okay, I think it, I think we can, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So we have three, three. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of it to hear it. Okay? Okay.
So can, then can I ask, moving forward here?
Sure.
You met with the Army Corps and DNR on February seventh?
I'm sorry, that can't, that meeting was canceled due to weather conditions. We're rescheduled for this Thursday.
We don't have their opinion one way or the other.
Not yet.
Regarding the extension of the dock, I mean, that's the only thing that they're going to give us a ruling on, right?
Well, the other thing that would be, take place if we were to do some rip wrapping or, you know, something to place the, you know, the river rock on the dike, we may need a rip wrap permit.
Okay.
Would you need also a permit from either the DNR or the Army Corps for the pathways or access down to the river?
Depends on how much land is disturbed. Last time when we considered, we had a proposal for some metal stairways down there. At that time, we had a, just a verbal agreement that because of, there wasn't enough land being disturbed that we didn't need permission by the DNR. We just had a verbal agreement that it met their criteria and actually we had to go through the planning commission to get a conditional use permit. And at that time, the planning commission approved the metal stairs and gave us a unconditional, or a conditional use permit.
Okay. Well, does anybody, well, I'm going to say, does any, when you look at this proposal, where's the money going to come from? And, and again, I, I don't think these are firm bids.
Doesn't even look like it's even close to being firm bids.
It's an estimate on how much it would cost.
Was it a hundred and ten thousand right now?
Right.
With no engineering or design?
No engineering or design yet.
So it's about a hundred and fifty thousand probably.
Probably. So where would you, where would you propose taking that money from? Park fees? I mean, we've got a request for Burton Field for how much money we want at Burton Field out of that park field. I think there's a hundred and some, a hundred and ten left in the, in the, yeah, A.
For Burton Fields?
No, no, for, no, just for, for in the whole total that we have in that park fund.
What are the mooring fees used for that we collect currently from?
They're used to improve the park.
And boat launch.
Well, short of the total of what they're suggesting.
Again, that was just some estimates. I know that was the stairs, just an estimate for the stairs were ten to twelve thousand dollars apiece for construction. Really didn't talk about engineering. If we were to put some river rock, that was one of my concerns, if they were have, would have river rock, river rock from the shoreline up so many feet as the water, that's what makes this whole situation difficult is the, in, the river just goes up and down all the time. So the last meeting we had, they said, well, just keep putting river rock from the top down. So my feeling is, talking with a couple excavators, I just don't think it's a good idea that this put, dump the river rocket over the existing rip wrap. If we're going to do it right, I think the rip wrap should be removed. According to this plan, about fifty feet from each side of the stairs, about twenty-five feet from the shoreline up and remove the rip wrap, put fabric down and then put about a foot of the four to nine inch river rock. I mean, if you're going to have something that's lasting, just some estimates from the local excavators, you know, you're looking at sixty to seventy thousand dollars for that and then the stairs would be on top of that.
So this design here doesn't have what you're suggesting, so if I'm understanding you right, it, with the river going up and down, it would probably wash away or more or less?
Well, how are you going to?
Educate me on that one because I need to be.
So if you, I know one of the plans were just have ten feet of river rock from the shoreline.
Right.
Up the slope. But what happens when the river rises above that point?
Right.
So I guess the plan was just, you know, if that's the case, go from the dike road all the way down to the river with river rock. And that's about how much it would be.
And I'd like to add that, you know, obviously option number three, you know, it, it mentions path slash stair. I, I think it would be the consensus on the park board to maybe forego stairs and actually go with more of a minimalist, still stairs, but pathway of stones versus a concrete stairway. I know, I can speak for myself for sure. I know that I just see concrete stairs being ripped apart by ice. So I'd like to see, you know, the least bit of stone work done so that we have a walkway down there for the, the moorings.
I know you probably don't want to hear this, Tom, but how is this not different than what we just did to the First Street residents? You're asking to put boats back on public property and more boat that they own. But yet we just kicked off First Street property owners that basically is the same situation without a dock.
First of all, I didn't do that, so.
Yeah, I.
Hang on a second.
I'm not saying you, you, the kind, us, okay.
I think it is different in that the city is operating a public mooring facility that's open to the public under certain rules. That's different from private persons just putting a private dock that's only to be used by those private people on public land. This is something the city is offering and saying, we want you to use dinghies to get to your mooring spot and store the dinghies in such and such a way. So it's a public, it's a public amenity at the park.
Ah, come on. Well, it's also, it's. Hang on a second, Laurie.
But that would be saying that other mooring people that, only the people that moor can store there.
Yes, that's exactly right.
But that's the same, that actually is the same because otherwise private, anybody could just use this mooring place to store a dinghy.
No, the only people who can moor are people who have applied and gotten a mooring permit and paid.
Right, so it's only for specific people, not a public?
Well, except that there's a rules and guidelines on who can have a mooring per, permit.
It is, it's open to the public.
Yes, it's open to the public.
There's a process for reserving.
Right, if someone gives up their mooring permit, then there's rules for, there's a waiting list and rules for who gets to apply for a mooring per, permit.
So I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Laurie.
I think fundamentally what's missing and has been missing is something in the lease agreement. And I asked this at our very first meeting about this. Something in the lease agreement with the mooring holders about dinghy storage. I don't think there's anything in there. It needs to be put in there regardless of what.
And that was discussed at park board as well, that they go hand in hand, that to move forward.
And it was just implied to this point forward, we made some changes down on First Street and so there was, there were some who felt like that meant everything has to come off and this, it goes back to the agreement that we have with them.
Sure.
So this, let's, let's say hypothetically, option three goes through and there's a path and there's stairs. Is this a public path then? Is it a private path only for the mooring holders who pay their fee? How does that work?
That is the diff, I mean, it's a practical difficulty to me because how are you going to control it? For example, when you have a marina, usually you have some sort of signs up that say for, you know, mooring or slip owners only. You could put signs like that up, but basically you're having a path down to the river. That's a problem for me just liability wise, but I think you could indicate that this path is for mooring permit holders only.
On public property.
On public property.
Who have gotten a permit, paid the fee to use the mooring area.
How many of those are citizens?
It's not for fishing, it's not for.
Fifteen, fifteen?
Well, let's think about this. We don't control that area now. People go down there and fish. People go down, right? I mean, they do, it's not a real desirable place to hang out.
The enforcement of it is a problem. I'm not saying I think this is a good solution. I'm just saying it's a different situation than the First Street situation.
I disagree with you. I appreciate your counsel, but it's for us to decide which way to go.
Oh, yes, I understand. It's for you to decide what storing solution is best.
I think, I look at it, if I can give my two cents, is how, how can we justify spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for forty-nine people?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a different question altogether.
It's a very important part of this whole thing is, does that make any sense to anybody? I mean, it's a pretty, we, we proposed, I guess on eighty-one, we talked a little bit about trying to find a solution that may be a temporary till we see if that could work or not, and the answer was not interested in that. It's just not even a viable solution, but it, I think it might have been. But the people that are in charge of it say they have no interest in that. So it's either all or nothing. There is no compromise available. At least the way I, I've been talking to the, the folks that I talk to about it and, and so it's either, I mean, there's many, you know, the city of Minneapolis, I don't believe has any dinghy storage, at least that I could find. And I think they have over a thousand slips in, at their lakes. And people carry their dinghies down and they put it in the, and it, it's a lake, not a river. I understand that. But they carry their dinghies down and then they, they get out there, whether it's a portable raft or whatever it is.
Susan, can I correct you, please?
No, I, no. We'll ask for comments later.
So may I ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
Part of the reason we had this discussion was, yes, because of First Street, but it was also because of aesthetics and people didn't like the way that it looked. I think one question we have to ask ourselves is, is this a viable long-term solution? And so can we spread that cost out over not just the fifty mooring holders this year, but does it make sense as a long-term solution? Given the impact, given the fees that come in and, I mean, I think we just have to, we have to look at it that way too.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Spread the class out with the boat launch fees and everything or what?
No, I'm just saying it's not just a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever the final number is for this year. It's, if it is a long-term solution, does it kind of solve the aesthetic issue? Does it address the safety issue? Does it clean up our shoreline? I mean.
I don't think it will clean up our shoreline and from what, at least the comment I watched the park board meeting and I think, Tom, you'd propose we have kind of a similar dinghy, that everybody kind of has a, a similar kind of a boat.
That was a recommendation by the subcommittee that, you know, the dinghies are possibly, you know, some neutral colors or one or two colors.
Certain length?
Number, yeah, number that's clearly visible so we could identify them.
But I think that was.
Certain size also.
Wasn't that kind of turned down and said, no, we want to have, I think someone suggested we'd be able to put canoes back down there again? I think that was a comment that was made. So are we really going to solve anything?
Well, I tend to think about things pretty simply, but if we step back a little bit, we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we are not addressing the issue that we set out to address.
I know.
Right. We're not getting dinghies off the shoreline, right? I mean, we could get some uniformity without building a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of stairs. We could put it in their lease, what's allowed, you know, one dinghy per, per mooring, whatever.
I had actually asked that question at one of the park board meetings and it was a very brief discussion, but I, I think that the moorers would be fine with the way it was. But I know that what we're looking for is the aesthetics and maybe it's insurmountable having it the way it was, even if we were to put in a, you know, an ordinance on what that dinghy needed to be. So.
Comments? Richie?
Do we know what other municipalities are doing who have the same problem? I mean, do we have any, are there other municipalities near us that have the same problem and have solved it some way that we don't know about?
Uh, this is, this is a pretty, pretty unique situation with the river. It, it really is, I think.
Okay.
I mean, to me, we have a city that has bordered by two rivers, including Lake Maloo and St. Croix. Um, we've made a bunch of decisions that don't really favor a river town. Um, and maybe at the time, they seem like good decisions, but the parking empty trailer one comes to mind. We didn't really think about the Maloo situation and the friends I know that used to come up there don't anymore because there's no place for them to park their boat. There's only five slots at the lot. The rowers and the sailboat club, they don't have private access to the river. The dinghies do. We had a dock. We don't have a dock anymore. There's all kinds of things that altogether now look like we somehow missed the boat that we're not really thinking about Hudson as a river town. And I know a lot of people here, including myself, moved to Hudson because of the river. So somewhere along the line, something kind of isn't making sense. In its purest form, I think, you know, it makes sense to support the mooring holders, et cetera. I have a personal interest at stake, might have to recuse myself at some point here, but, um, you know, I think we're missing the boat, literally the boat. All the boats, all the docks, all the dinghies. And somewhere along the line, we need to start embracing the river or just, yeah, let's just categorically say nobody can have access except for the boat ramp and then we're done. I mean, you know, it, a lot of people in this town are here for the river.
Okay, so, but not having these tied to the dike road does not ignore the river. The, on, the river is the sailboats. We're not taking away sailboats. We're not taking, that's been the confusion that's been out there. The sailboats are still there. Um, the people who live here can take, or, or come from Minneapolis, can bring their dinghies and launch them or can go with the alternative that we tried addressing the last time? You know, we, we, we've looked at alternatives. It's not that we're saying no dinghies. We're saying that the location of the dinghies does, is not, well, at least I should say I'm saying, the location of the dinghies is not, is not uniform with what we've been doing, exactly what you've been saying. And I said this back when we had the dock discussion, if we're going to make this deal on the docks, it's going to have to go all the way down the river because it's not, I, just on principle, I think we need to keep it all, you know, if it's a policy, it's a policy. And if we're going to follow the policy and we were that strong on following the policy, then that's how I stand. So if we want to have the Afton, the docks be, or the dinghies be on the Afton dock, I don't have a problem with that. Because that's a totally different situation. If we want them to launch in a boat launch, I don't have a problem with that. If we want to somehow figure out a dinghy house, fine, but I have a problem with them being on the dike road because it goes exactly on what, and I know you're saying it's slightly different, but I don't see it that way. So I see it as.
I would say a clear analogy is if you, if what was being proposed on the river, the park property was a permit system similar to what we have for the mooring policy whereby anyone under the rules established by the park, by the city could apply to have a dock. That would be similar to the mooring permit situation. But what we had there was not that. It was only individuals who happened to own property abutting the park. And that's the difference.
I know, I, I, I understand that, but I, I see the dike road, it's the, it's a public road. It's, you know, it's.
I totally respect the council's decision on not wanting to have a dinghy, you know, store them on the, on the dike road. Don't get me wrong. That's, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just differentiating the two situations.
Okay. Where are we at, folks?
Well, I mean, I think we have to get back to, do we acknowledge the fact that these people have a lease with the city and that it's open to the public? And that the expectation all along is in that, that they would have a dinghy on the dike? It's just not been verbalized?
Well, I don't think that's exactly correct. In talking with city staff, Liz Moline in particular, her memory, and again, it's not documented, is that the assumption was they would be, dinghies would be launched from the boat launch. But it's not written down. That's why we're in this situation and it needs to be addressed. But that, there was no assumption, as far as I know, that dinghies would be stored on the dike.
Okay.
That kind of happened and then became unsightly and there were safety concerns and I think Tom wanted to address those.
I think we wanted to address those, didn't we?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it was the council that.
I think.
On Tom.
Well, not only, not only the council or myself, it was brought up by the people that had the moorings that, you know, uh, at one time, many of them were much younger and they could get up and down the rocks fairly easy.
Yep.
As time went on, it's, it gets more and more difficult and that's when the requests came in for stairs. And I think that's kind of when everything started.
Okay.
Was safety for access to the shoreline.
What's the, I want to understand the frustration of the option that was brought last time around because as I, you know, option two says, for example, city purchases and installs dinghy storage dock next to newly extended courtesy dock per option one. So to me, I'm reading it as city would build a dock to put dinghies on. Okay, am I correct in how I've, how I've defined, okay. So why was it such a big deal to have it, to go, to do the, what we were trying to do the first time around with, with the Afton boat launch? And having the dock extended, that was shut down.
You're talking about option one?
No, with the Afton boat, yes.
I think the issue is, I, I think they felt it was too far away to roll.
Too far for the furthest moorings?
How much farther was it than what the furthest one is now?
Now, now you could, before they could put their, their dinghy wherever they wanted.
Walk all the way out to your boat.
Yep. They could get as close as they want.
But the farthest dinghy, because I've watched a guy take his dinghy and park it in the Afton over there and I watched him do it one Friday night and, I mean, that's the same spot. I mean, I mean, they can, it's possible, right? It's not impossible.
The issue is that weather changes over time.
Correct.
If I went out on a sunny morning, came back on a stormy night and safety becomes an issue trying to get back to the one spot where the boats would be. And that, that's totally understandable.
Well, I don't.
You know, one of my suggestions, and I'm just going to throw it out here, was to move the ding, the mooring field over by the gas dock at the, you know, just totally move it because you don't, you know, it's out of the weather and there's a whole bunch of land over there that, you know, no, it's not park land and be much more accessible and, I mean, does the mooring field have to remain in this current location? Can't we just move the field? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think we have access there. That isn't our land.
We have to change all the postcards.
Oh, I think I know where you're talking about on that.
It's true. We would have to change the postcards.
What if instead of building a dock extension, you built a dinghy dock where stair number twos are at? Why don't you just take the dock extension away and just build a dinghy dock where stair number twos are at? Put a stairway down to the dock number two or stair number two and let all the dinghies dock there? I mean, I.
Because in order to get that, we have to get DNR approval to put a dock out, I would guess.
Right.
But, but we have to get DNR approval for the Jarvis one anyways, the dinghy extension.
But that dock is already there.
So you're saying another dock?
Yeah, just put a dock where stair number two is at and just for dinghies. It's a dinghy dock, just, just dinghies.
But part of it was that Mr. Jarvis was going to pay for the dock extension.
Yeah, I don't understand that. I just don't get.
And so that would be. And so that would be, it would become a city dock that we would pay for the cost of.
Then we think we ran into the same thing again. Who's going to monitor that one and who, who can be on that dock?
Well, it would be for people who store dinghies, the mooring, only the mooring permit holders because they're the ones who are allowed to have dinghies on that dock.
Maybe we can control the sticker on the dinghy. And if they don't have a sticker, they don't belong there.
Right.
I'm not on the park board, but it's just a-
Who would you get to enforce that? He's talking about cutting people up at Grandview Park. And we, we don't, who, who would enforce boat police? To go checking for stickers that stick on-
Well, I, I, if I was a dinghy holder and came back and didn't have my spot, I'd certainly not be happy about it.
So, you're going to call the police, take them off our streets to go fix, to take care of a boat problem with the parking boat issue?
I think you could self-police it. I don't know.
No. But isn't that a, a duty of theirs? If it's one of the city policies and-
Who?
And the police. If it's a, if it's a rule that's on the books, that's their job.
You really want them chasing after boat dinghies?
I don't know. I, I mean, should we go through the list of rules?
Absolutely.
That we would find goofy for them to spend time on?
You start it and I'll read it.
Well, I think what would happen is they'd notify the park department and they'd go out and check and see, and remove the dinghy if it's not properly identified as a mooring permit holder.
You know, I guess what I'm wondering is can we, um, can we take some baby steps here? I mean, can we talk about uniformity of dinghies and get that in place in the lease? That seems like a reasonable place to start. It was one of the points of contention. Can we have a uniform method of attaching the dinghies? So that we don't have winches on trees and can we do some simple things?
Well, we, we had that same discussion. But we didn't want to get the cart before the horse, you know, if it wasn't going to get by council.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not hearing agreement to spend $150,000 to put stairs in. I'm not hearing agreement on whether or not the dock is a good idea.
I don't think we're agreeing on private property on public land either. I don't think we're there. So, I don't, somewhere along the line, yeah, you're right, we got to make a break here somewhere on something.
Well, we do have a pass resolution ordinance change where it says no, nothing on public land.
Nothing, well, the, the-
Well, that's, yeah, the current ordinance and the council would say-
The current motion that stands is no, nothing on the dike road.
Right.
So, what we have here, folks, is we have an option, or a recommendation from park board on option three and we need to decide whether or not we think that's the right option, I think, unless you feel like there's- Right?
I'm going to jump the gun. I'll make a motion to deny option three.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, let's have some more discussion. If, is that premature to ask for that? Because that's, that was the recommendation from the park board.
Well, are we just going to keep going round and round and round and round? I guess is my question. I mean, do the, the people that have interest in the, the mooring field, do they, can they just quit now and then, then where the, that's where the chips are going to fall?
No.
Or will we consider new options or, I mean-
I'll consider any option that doesn't involve having them stored on the dike road.
Okay.
How's that? And there is an option, it's called, that's there. I mean, it's maybe not the most ideal, but it's there.
Going for the boat launch.
Well, I can tell you as a, as a boater myself, let's say half of them are out on a Saturday. I don't want 25 extra trailers in the boat launch.
They're not going to be, do you need a trailer for your dinghy?
Some do.
Well, trailers, they, they, if they can't fit in the boat launch, they have to take them home, right? That's the policy we passed last summer.
Correct.
So, we won't have that.
I'm talking about the boat launch to have 20, 25 extra. Well, I mean, I understand that-
We passed that policy.
We also passed the no trailer so you can launch and leave, but then you have to go all the way home.
You got to take your trailer home.
All these things sort of pile up to not quite focusing on a river town. I mean, they do, it's-
No, I mean, if you remember, we didn't let people launch and leave and we opened up the policy-
That I know.
To let people launch and leave, to increase the number of people who could get on the river.
Which, if I recall, did the DNR force us to do that in some way, shape or form?
Correct. But for people that live up on Third Street, in fact, my house too, I can't leave my trailer in front of my house. You have to kind of figure out, you know, when, when you're not there. It's downtown, I understand, but not all of Hudson. It gets kind of awkward, so, and then the Malibu thing came into play. I'm not saying it was a bad idea. It just doesn't, it wasn't really considering everything else that we have going on here, is all.
Okay. Okay, um-
I just liked, I still liked, um, Afton, the Afton cruise idea. I thought that was a great idea. I thought it met the needs and if one, I'm sure it could have been, we could have figured out how to not make it that much further.
I mean- Representatives from the, the mooring holders shared pretty explicitly, they thought it was too far and too long for people to row and then-
I still want to know the different, the difference in length.
I think somebody would have the exact, uh-
Does someone know that?
Do you know the exact number of feet that, longer than it is? I think you probably do, don't you?
Well, 100 feet.
1,200 feet.
From, from which location?
From, uh, the boat docks to the furthest dinghy away, or furthest mooring away?
I don't have that number, but it's, uh-
1,300.
1500.
I thought it was like 1,200.
1,500.
Well, the, yeah, but both the elements.
So, that's a quarter of a mile just to get to the mooring field.
From-
That's a long ways to-
From the, from the Afton, with the Afton dock, the way it would have been?
No, from the Afton dock, it's shorter from the stretch on the dock.
That's what I was asking about, the Afton dock, extension dock. I know on, on the boat launch.
Come on up.
Yep.
Yeah, I know. I want to know the Afton dock extension.
From the Afton dock extension to the eastern margin of the mooring field, it's about 225 feet.
Okay.
Okay, and then the mooring field itself is about 1,300 feet wide.
Okay.
So, from there, the furthest rowing distance is about a quarter of a mile, which is an awfully long ways. Um, it's, it sounds like, according to Tom, it's an additional 1,500 feet if you start at the launch ramp itself.
So, if the farthest, and, and I'm asking this not, I'm, just because I need to be educated, just the only reason why I'm asking this. And because I'm trying to picture how it would be set up too, if that were the case. If the dinghy that's the, that would be considered the farthest from the mooring field?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying to get this out, how I'm thinking it. So, you have the dinghies, let's say, I don't remember what the drawing was like, let's say the dinghies were lined up on the Afton dock.
Okay, on the, on the dinghy dock extension.
Yes, on the extension. And you have your farthest dinghy here and your, you know, I think it was on an angle, if I recall, or some, I might be wrong, but no, I'm talking about the extension if they do.
The extension itself was 84 feet long, so.
Right, so you're, the statement that I'm understanding is the dinghy that's farthest away, you're making a measurement from the farthest dinghy to the farthest point?
I, I'm saying from the end of the dinghy dock-
To the farthest point.
The farthest one is about 1,500 feet.
So, was the dock supposed to be on an angle? I mean, my question is this, if the person is farthest awayed and they get a closer mooring, does it make a difference?
You're only talking an 84-foot difference.
Not the length of the dock, it's the tremendous distance of the mooring field.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify and understand. I just want to understand.
Yeah, it's the length of the mooring field. It's just quite long, yeah.
Right, okay. And we can't, and like, like, uh, John was saying, there's no way to readjust the mooring field, I suppose.
That's subject to, I think, the Army Corps of Engineers.
It'd be a process, yeah, totally.
Okay. As long as you're up, do you want to add anything quickly?
Hour's worth.
No, you won't get an hour, but-
I get that. I understand that. We have been looking at solutions, much as the park board has, much as the council has, trying to figure out what's the best solution that we can find. The criteria that we have always used are safety first and then cost. The biggest concern about moving, about basing ourselves on a dinghy dock extension is that there are long rowing distances, uh, which would have a crosswind and crosswaves, uh, which could be very dangerous. And so, that's a big safety factor for us. The distance we have to commute is, is a huge factor. The second thing is cost. Any kind of a floating dock is going to be expensive. If we're going to spend money for a dock, particularly to house the dinghies, we would suggest that money is much better spent by putting infrastructure on the dike itself. That way, the commuting distances are much shorter and much easier for us to handle. So, that's the basic approach that we've taken to this, safety and cost. Almost any solution, other than coming from the launch ramp, um, is better than the dock itself because we think that's not a good investment over time. We think that the infrastructure on the dike, which has worked for over 30 years, is probably the best solution. We think that that's something that can be easily handled within the context of the mooring permit. Unlike other folks in town, we already have a permitted arrangement with the city and there are only 50 of us. And as a part of that permitted arrangement, we'd like to see the dinghy dock, the, uh, the, the mooring dinghies themselves included. Because the mooring itself is only half useful. You need a way to get to and from it. That's what these mooring dinghies are for and that's why they are fundamentally different from other boats. So, I could go on and on, but I'd be happy to answer specific questions that you have if you think it would be helpful.
I have another probably stupid question, but I'm not a boater, so please give me a little leeway.
We'd be happy to take you for a ride at your convenience.
Well, no, I, I'm fine. I'm good without that. But, um, my question is, we're talking about rowing. Is, is it not heard of for sailors to put a motor on their dinghy to get out to the mooring or is it like kepa for motors to be on dinghies or I just-
The types of boats that we use are small and so they are really not amenable to having motors on them. Also, having motors exposed to the elements makes them difficult to start. Those, those, those oars, those are reliable as can be.
Okay.
But the size of the boat and the type of the boat, uh, yes, you can put a motor on them. That's obviously an extra expense. It's obviously another thing that may or may not work when you need it to. That's why almost all of the places, um, that have dinghies are powered by your arms using those oars. And the shorter, the better.
Good question.
Yeah, and this is, it's not a legal question, but these are the questions I had when I saw this proposal is how does this solve the scrambling on the rocks, which I had concerns about in terms of people getting injured? That's one question.
Okay.
And the other question is, how is it a better, uh, investment, how does the up and down of the river affect it? It seems like it's just prone to being washed away. And those, again, are just practical questions.
I have one more question to add to that.
Yeah, watch that.
A few years ago, we, we, a few years ago, maybe a year ago, I believe, didn't we, uh, we had a study to look below the dike, to see the infrastructure below the dike road, to see, under the river.
On the bridge.
The bridge. Yep. Okay, so, what if we have infrastructure issues there that we need to take care of and we have a permanent structure attached to that? Is that going to, you know, affect anything?
I, I don't think that's an issue. That, I don't think it'd be an issue. I think it's far enough down.
Okay.
So, your first question had to do with, um, the process of clambering down all the rip ramp.
Well, you, I see the path here, but there's eight on each side, so some of the people on the ends are going to have to go across the rocks. So, I'm not clear on how that's going to solve that issue that you guys raised.
The purpose of the smooth river rock that we have been talking about as an additional layer on the dike, would provide an easier walking surface and you would be able to, uh, come down the path to the point where the dinghies are stored. And then you would have to move laterally across the dike in order to get a hold of your dinghy and then you could slide it down into the water and back up. And you could probably use the path or the stairway to actually do that. That would be much safer than the situation that we have now where the surface is incredibly uneven and very difficult to walk on. And the rocks tend to move, um, as time goes on. So, that's, that's the, does that answer your question?
Well, and river rock won't wash away or move instead of-
Well, we're talking about rock, um, we've talked about various proposals, but we're talking about rocks anywhere from this size to this size. So, they're going to be much less, um, able to wash away. And if we look at, um, some of the new proposals with, with paths, um, that, um, that Tom and the park, park board have talked about, those actually go into the dike in order to ensure that there's a good, safe walking surface. And I think that's the most important part of it. If we have a place to, to actually get up and down from the water, from the water's edge to the top, that's the most difficult part of the journey. There's no perfect solution to this. I'll, I'll, I'll agree with that comment that was made before. There is no perfect solution to this. There are only solutions that are, are better or worse and it depends upon the criteria that you apply. Our two major criteria are safety and cost. And I think that I could speak for the, uh, the entire, uh, mooring group by saying that of all the choices that are out there, if we just went back on there, we would consider that to be the safest and that would clearly be the least expensive. Even with the hassle of coming up and down the rock, that would be far better than trying to row a quarter mile across, across the, uh, the wind and the waves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, right now, we have a motion on the table, I believe, to deny option three.
Option three.
And a second. Is there any other discussion?
I mean, with no funding source being identified, it's kind of hard to support it.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, it's hard to support option three, not the motion.
Anyone else? Comment?
I have some suggestion about the cost.
I'm, we're, I think we're done with the public comment. Unless, unless the council wants to hear more public comment.
No, I had a question about the path. Just one more.
Okay.
I'm trying to, where's, where's, where's the path on this drawing?
I don't think there is one.
I know, I'm looking at the drawing. Oh, I see river rock.
There's stairs, but it says stairs or a path, right?
There, there was no final-
Path proposal?
Plan made.
Okay, I'm just asking because-
I mean, really, we needed to get this to council to see if a path slash stairway-
Okay.
Would-
That's-
Would work.
And the path would come, if there were a path, you're, you're at, your thought was it would come down from the dike?
Correct.
Okay, like the stairs are doing. Somewhat.
Correct, yes.
I just want to understand the pathway. I still keep my motion. I just wanted to clarify.
Kurt, was there any identifiable source of funding for this?
It, it was not discussed.
They had it on the issue sheet. It was coming from the park improvement funds. There's not enough money in there to do that.
You know, there's nothing that says it would have to be three.
No.
It'd start with one.
And then who, who gets the, who gets the dinghies there?
Right.
Who do you pick? Rotate? You pay more? Happen there? You can't provide for everyone. Should you provide for two, four, six, eight, 10, 20 of them?
If we reject this, we just need to be ready to-
Yep.
Discuss what the other options are.
Okay. Any other input? Comments?
I have some cost information.
Do we want to hear cost information?
I'm hearing.
Okay.
Well, just, uh, I, I just noticed today that, uh, that Tom Zulley had a number on here for 110,000. My name is Dennis Kroll. Um, I, uh, I was kind of surprised to see that number. Last year, I did some estimating. Um, I talked to a, a landscape consultant, Joe Eberts with Outdoor Concepts, who's a contractor and I'm a designer. And, uh, I've worked with here and there, um, him and, um, I forget the guy's name, one of the, one of the people at, at Rivard Stone. We talked about making cushions or a place for these, uh, on one side of the stair, on each side of the stair kind of system. And, um, those cushions were, um, stone. Um, we, we, in talking about it, we just, the fear was that sand would wash away and everybody agreed. We talked about making those rocks bigger, one to two inches, um, or something like that, so that they wouldn't wash away. And that was, um, that was what, um, we, the numbers that we came up with, uh, some, uh, I think it was three and a half or four and a half inches deep of that stuff, just on top of the stones that are there, which I think would be acceptable, that's what their recommendation was. But I think would be acceptable to the, uh, to the DNR and, uh, I don't know if, uh, the Army Corps, but, uh, but it basically would be transparent as far as water goes. It would be a cushion. Each one of those boats would cost, a pad for each one of those boats, five- one of those boats, five by 10 feet, would cost about 11, what was it? It's about $100. It was $5,000 for, to do the whole thing with just 10 feet up. Now, if we, if we extended up three times that to, to go two-thirds of the way up the slope, that would be $15,000 for the rocks instead of some, some, what were the numbers in Mr. Zulley's?
75.
75?
Times three. I mean, it was three, so you divide it by three, so.
75, yeah. So there's a big difference between 15 and 75. And, and this is not, I don't, I don't know if you even have to consider cost right now, but just, I mean, you could consider concept without cost. Though there are, I mean, there are several different ways of doing this. On costs for the floating easy dock kind of system, if you had put a, for each one of those dinghies to make a dock on the end of Gordy's docks, you can figure just for easy estimating, 1,150 or 1,200 per dinghy. That was, those were the numbers I got from the rep and several years ago, and they were confirmed last, last time we talked about it. So 1,200 versus 100, or, or 300, let's say, for those stones. A path, the paths, the idea of paths seemed viable.
Where's that at? Is that on any plan that we have?
Path or stairs.
In that option three.
Path or stairs. That's why I asked what a path was on the plan, if I didn't see it.
The idea of a path versus a stair might, something that, you know, we need to talk more about, but I did a quick sketch on, on those, and they have, they seem to be somewhat. There, I don't have, I don't have.
Go ahead, you can pin over there.
But this, this is what, this is how they.
I don't know what I'm looking at. I'm sorry. I've seen a lot of, I don't know what this is.
Oh, that's, let's see, I'm sitting paper.
Okay.
This is the mooring field.
All right, thank you.
This is, if you look, you know, a little magnifying glass, you can look real closely and you'll see that.
I had LASIK. I'm good.
Agreed, Beth.
All right. Any other questions for Dennis? Anything?
Here you go.
Anybody have any questions for Dennis on that?
Excuse me, I had done some experiments since 2007.
Sure, come on in. State your name and address, please.
My name's Harvey Chitester. I'm at 102 North Street in Hudson, over Lake Malaloo. This whole thing started when I tried to see if we could get some deeper access, some more, at the seawall, there's only parking for about three or four boats because of the depth, and I was hoping that could be changed. The Park Board, they did some investigation and found that that wasn't really an option. But at the time, they asked me a simple question was, you know, how could we get the dinghies looking better, et cetera, you know, more organized? And my comment was, well, it's hard to get, you know, everybody parks their dinghy where they can chain it because there's no place to chain it except for a few trees or running a big chain up somewhere. And if there were places to chain it, they would just organize where you put some rings to chain it to. And the other comment I met is, if you can get down to it, that's where they're going to go to, to put their boat. And so that was my, my suggestion. And at the time, I said, why don't you just put some sand down there on the rock, and then you could walk on it, and they wouldn't twist under your feet. And the comment was, well, they'll all wash away, et cetera. So I put a pail of sand down my, by my dinghy to see if it is, so five years later, it's still there. Part of the thing is, you know, we're in a backwash. We're not on, we're, we're in a backwash of the river. The river goes up and down, but it doesn't go across it. It doesn't go down the river. It's in the backwash. And you can see that the water doesn't even freeze there a lot of the, part of the winter. I have some photos of that in case you'd like to see, just something to consider. It doesn't have to be a big costly deal to get people to put their dinghies where you want them to be. If you provide them a couple of simple features, where they will then put them there. So if anybody wanted to see the pictures, I've got these here.
Thank you.
All this stuff brought up at Park Board? That was just brought up?
That was not.
I think there's a simpler solution than what we're looking at. So, can we call a question?
Sure. Question's been called. Would you read the motion again, please? So everybody's aware. Oh, we have to vote on the call for the question? All in favor of calling the question?
I don't think you have to vote.
Yeah, that's what you said.
We got called out last time on it.
Yep, let's vote on it.
Calling the question?
Yep.
Let's do it, just in case. Can't hurt.
Do we have to have a roll call vote? We'll have, well, all in favor of calling for the question, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Okay.
What are we calling for?
All right, now if you give us the motion, please.
I have to deny approving option three.
And there is a motion and a second? Who made the motion?
I did.
And second by Randy. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, five to one. Okay. Any alderperson? Comments? Questions? City attorney. Oh, go ahead.
Wait, aren't you going to take a vote on the motion for?
We did.
Oh, okay.
We just did. It's five to one. The way I got it, is that what you had?
That's what I got.
Okay. City attorney, anything? City administrator? Nothing from the council?
Actually, I would like to bring something up. I mean, can we have a discussion at our next meeting about coming up with a simple solution to organize the dinghies? Or am I not able to suggest that because I was on the?
You voted yes.
No, I, but I mean, when we had the vote to remove everything from the dike, I voted no with Kurt, and we lost. And so am I not able to suggest we bring that back up?
Well, I think the council, there needs to be a solution.
Yeah.
On the mooring situation. And so I think it's appropriate. It's not just a reconsideration at this point. It's, it's what's going to be done with the dinghies for the mooring. I think you should have a definitive answer to that.
And I don't know if that means the Park Board talking about the lease, or if it has to start here and it goes, whatever is decided here goes back into the lease. Maybe nothing's decided. Maybe we end up with a four-two vote again, but we've sort of investigated a lot of options. There doesn't seem to be one that's amenable to everyone, but we haven't really solved the problem.
I don't know if we're allowed to comment at this point. Is this discussion or?
I think we can.
Well, I think, yeah, you're in, well, the chair has to allow a discussion if you.
Sure. Yep.
Well, I think we're still back to policy, frankly.
To what?
Back to policy about our, how we handle private property, public land. You know, that seems to be where the rift is here. I would assume that everyone in the room, including the mooring holders, can come up with a reasonable way to make things work, assuming that we're allowing our policy to extend to that. But that seems to be the rub, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, the, does anyone want to put the dinghies back on the dike?
I'm open to it if they're in a need.
I would like to.
Uniform fashion. Yeah, that's why we voted no.
And, and that was part of the Park Board discussion with, that we haven't solved yet, but we know that, you know, we discussed uniformity. We discussed getting it in the policy that allows for a dinghy because at this point, it's not.
And a uniform method of attaching them to the dike road. And if there's not support for that, there's not support, but I think it's worth having that discussion now that we've looked at some options. They're expensive. We don't all agree on the best one.
We, we've obviously got a commercial agreement with our Jarvis for docking his boat out there. What if the mooring association came into an agreement with the city to build a dock for the dinghies so that the dinghies would not be on public property, but would be on an association-owned dock, which would be where stairway number two is at? And they would run, and they would lease it from the city, just like Jordy Garvis does.
He owns that one, though. Yeah.
No, but he leases the.
Access.
And they release the access from the city, but it would be a private dock owned by the mooring association. And they would, they would run their dinghies out of their own, out of their own dock.
Again, this comes back to policy, and it has to include First Street. It just does.
But we've already got an agreement with Jarvis.
Well.
So I'm saying with it.
That should be reviewed too, because he only pays $1,100 a year for that.
That's up for renewal right now.
Right. So, I mean.
So I'm, I'm just saying, we, we were working under the same type of an agreement that, that was.
I'm, I'm with John on that one. I think we kind of brought that up for First Street, and that was shot, shot down to try and do something like, very similar to that.
Okay. We'll bring it up. I'll put it on the agenda for next time. I think Roger, if you want to have some discussion, I'm willing to have some discussion, whether or not, I think that might be a reasonable idea, whether or not the DNR and the Corps would allow another dock out there. It's something, and whether or not this group wants to do that or not. But it is an option that we haven't talked about.
My only other concern in this is timeframe because, you know, boating season's coming around the corner and.
Right.
So.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, is there a motion for adjournment?
It's all moved.
This is our second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.